But Davis says the Army Corps of Studies show they really should be adding five extra bends in the river totaling 2,500 linear feet to address current flow conditions and six bends to the river to prepare the valley for a warmer, wetter future. He says they just can't afford it. It's just one of the many harsh realities that park managers are facing as they reconcile themselves to their new roles steering America's heritage landscapes toward an unknowable future. For Here and Now, I'm Amy Eddings. Okay, so you may have heard about a big release in the music world on Friday. It took just 24 hours for this song to become Spotify's most streamed ever in a single day.
There ain't no gold in this river that I've been washing my hands in forever.
And Tanya hits the post there. Did you see? We were looking for an excuse to play Adele's "Easy on Me" off her new album, 30. Get it? About six years after 25. It drops next month. We plan on finding an excuse to play it every day. Here and Now is a production of NPR and WBUR. I'm Tanya Mosley in Los Angeles. I'm Robin Young.
Funding for Here and Now comes from the listeners of WBUR Boston and from Indeed, a hiring platform that connects businesses with candidates. Indeed partners with businesses to help attract, screen, and interview from one place. More at indeed.com/hire.
This is really the first competitive election we've had since Biden won office. And it's also the first race we're seeing without Trump on the ballot or in the White House. So we're really getting a glimpse of what voters are feeling about it.
I'm Michael Barbaro. That's today on The Daily from the New York Times.
That's The Daily weekdays at 6:30 on Radio IQ.
Support for Radio IQ comes from Red Rooster Coffee in Floyd, Virginia. Doors now open for shopping and takeout service. Outdoor seating available. 823 East Main Street beside the post office. And Bell Electric of Blacksburg. Class A electrical contracting since 1981. Residential service and commercial construction. Electric vehicle chargers, backup generators, and more. BellElectric.com.
Radio IQ is broadcasting and digital on WVTF Roanoke, WRIQ Charles City, Richmond, WURV Richmond, WVTU Charlottesville, WVTW Charlottesville, WVTR Marion, WISC FM Wise, WQIQ Spotsylvania, WIQR Lexington, WEHC Emory, WLUR Lexington, and in Richmond on 92.5 and Fredericksburg on 94.9. Radio IQ, a service of Virginia Tech.
Funding for Here and Now comes from MathWorks, creators of MATLAB and Simulink software, accelerating the pace of engineering and science. Learn more at mathworks.com. From NVR and WBUR Boston, I'm Robin Young. And I'm Tanya Mosley. This is Here and Now. Coming up, we take a look at the career of General Colin Powell, the country's first Black Secretary of State who died of COVID-19 at the age of 84. Also, another Michigan community struggles with dangerously high levels of lead in the water.
You should have zero amount of lead in your water.
The October 18th, 2021 session of Roanoke City Council is hereby called the order. And I will ask our clerk, Ms. Susan McCord, to please call the order.
Mr. Jeffrey?
Here.
Ms. Moon Reynolds?
Here.
Ms. Sanchez Jones?
Here.
Vice Mayor White Boyd?
Here.
Mr. Best Pitch?
Here.
Mr. Cobb?
Here.
And Mayor Lee?
Here. And a call, Mr. President. Please note that Councilman Best Pitch has requested to participate in the meeting via Zoom in the 2 o'clock and 7 o'clock meetings of the city council. I need to ask for a motion to allow participation via Zoom and suck it, and then we'll have a roll call on that request.
So move. Suck it.
All right, Madam Clerk, can you call the roll on Mr. Best Pitch's participation by Zoom?
Yes. Mr. Jeffrey?
Aye.
Ms. Moon Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones?
Aye.
Vice Mayor White Boyd?
Aye.
Mr. Cobb?
Aye.
And Mayor Lee?
Aye. All right. This afternoon, our invocation will be delivered by Reverend Kathy O'Keefe, pastor of Kingdom Life Ministries. And following the invocation, I will lead us in the pledge of allegiance. Reverend O'Keefe.
Let us pray. Lord, we thank you this afternoon for the power of your presence. Your presence never leaves us, and it never forsakes us. We ask you to saturate all of those that are gathered here today with your amazing presence. May the atmosphere of the chamber itself be filled with a sense of a higher purpose and a greater calling to do the work of building true community. May your love and peace, your patience and kindness fill our hearts and minds. Bless all that are gathered to serve this city that we call home. Bless them with wisdom and understanding. Bless them with creativity and humility. Bless them with a keen sense of fairness and insight that will lead to every citizen being acknowledged. May this council give voice to those citizens that are never heard, and may our deep and passionate love of community be inclusive of every person. Guide each decision to reflect higher values and deeper compassion and love for our fellow human beings. And empower this council with true vision and great courage to see and understand what is best for all of the people of the city. Touch every heart to rise and comprehend a greater purpose of life as we seek to live in harmony and justice with one another. And may your great glory shine upon us as we surrender our abilities and our energies to a higher cause, to elevate the life of this city. In the light of Christ, we pray. Amen.
Amen. A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much, Pastor. All right. Let me welcome everybody to afternoon session today, Roanoke City Council. Before we begin, I want to say a few words to all my council members and those who are watching us on RV TV. I'd like to really take this time to express my gratitude for every phone call, text, inbox message, flowers, visits, and every prayer that has been lifted for my family in the passing of my wife, Clara. Your love has really overwhelmed us as a family, and it was just so amazing. And I really want to thank you for that. It's almost impossible, even though we're going to try to do it, but I think it's almost impossible to acknowledge everyone and every organization individually. However, please know that all of your acts of kindness have embraced and encouraged our hearts. And we will always remember your kind expressions of sympathy, and we are forever thankful. So thank you so much. Today's council meeting will be televised live and replayed on RV TV Channel 3 on Thursdays at 7:00 PM and Saturday from 10:00 AM to 5:00 AM. And video stream through Facebook Live at facebook.com/roanokeva. Council meetings are offered with closed captioning for the hearing impaired. The announcements for today. The Council of the City of Roanoke is seeking applications for the following current vacancies and/or upcoming expiration of terms of office. Roanoke Civic Center Commission, one vacancy. The Roanoke Culture Endowment Board of Directors, one vacancy. Roanoke Neighborhood Advocates, three vacancies. And the Roanoke Regional Greenway Commission, two vacancies. The Roanoke Valley Regional Cable Television Committee, one vacancy. And the Touring Advisory Board, one vacancy. And that will be a citizen at large. You can access the city's homepage to complete an online application for any other vacancies that I just mentioned. And as a council, we always encourage our citizens to participate, to be a part of helping us govern the city. So we welcome all of your applications. And it's easily done by contacting our clerk's office, and they can guide you through that, or you can go online. But it's an easy process, and we look forward to receiving your applications for any vacancy here. The council also is accepting nominations for the 2021 Citizen of the Year. Forms are available online at www.roanokeva.gov/sixcitizensoftheyear. And in the clerk's office. So you can go online to get that application, or you can contact the clerk's office, and they will guide and direct you as to the forms you need to fill out and that process. Now, deadline for receipt of nominations is Friday, November 5, which is not that far away. So please notice that. I'll say it again. Friday, November 5, 2021, is the deadline for receiving nominations for the Citizen of the Year. All right. Item number two on our agenda is presentations and acknowledgements, and we have none this afternoon. We're now down to item number three, which is a hearing of citizens upon public matters. And council sets this time as a priority for citizens to be heard. And if deemed appropriate, we will forward matters to the city manager for response or recommendation or report to the council. So we want you to come and share with us your thoughts, and we will make sure that if it's appropriate, we'll ask our city manager to respond to what concerns you may have. All right. Speakers will be in person. Sign-ups will be given to you prior to the start of the meeting. And I have those slips. And, Madam Clerk, I think I have four speakers.
That's correct.
All right. All right. Our first speaker will be--I gotta make sure I'm reading it correct. Where's that speaker listener? Okay.
It's gonna be--
All right. Ms. Reagan-Castello-White. Thank you for this form, Madam Clerk. That's a new form. Thank you to help us. Welcome, Ms. White.
Hi. Can I take this off while I talk?
Sure.
All right. Thanks. So hi. My name's Reagan Castello-White. This is Brian Burnett. And we're here today to talk to y'all about the lack of childcare in Roanoke City for kids with behavioral needs and disabilities. I can tell you, as a foster parent in Roanoke City, that even support from DSS is not enough to find this kind of specialized childcare when you need it. I struggled for weeks trying to find after-school care for my seven-year-old foster kiddo with autism. During this time, I was working from home while trying to take care of a kid that was dealing with the trauma of being in foster care, as well as the special needs of autism. My only break during this time was driving him around downtown and looking at the Mill Mountain Star and singing along to Bubble Guppies. Our caseworker finally found an after-school program that was willing to take him, and I was so relieved and also so exhausted by then. He made it there for three months before he was kicked out because they couldn't handle his meltdowns, basically. So we went back to the drawing board, only this time there were even fewer options to choose from. DSS would not pay for a private option, even though there were no licensed providers in our area. So what I ended up doing was paying out of pocket for a babysitter to come stay at our house while I was trying to work. And thankfully, I did not lose my job during this time, but I could see how things might have worked out differently for another family. And this is only my story. There are a lot of families in Roanoke with a version of this story to tell. And this is not just about kids in foster care. This is about kids who have autism, kids who are dealing with trauma, kids with special medical needs, kids with emotional problems, or just any kid that doesn't fit in the box that works for daycare. These kids and their families are just not being served by the existing childcare network in Roanoke. There are simply not enough respite providers, daycare, and after-school providers that are trained in trauma-informed care and disability-informed care. What often ends up happening to these kids is that they are kicked out of daycare after daycare until their caregiver gives up on trying to find support and maintaining a job, and drops out of the workforce and keeps the kid at home. These are some of the most vulnerable families in Roanoke. These are some of the hardest-working caregivers and the most overwhelmed, and they deserve the support of their communities. None of this is new. This was a problem before COVID, and it's an even bigger problem now. But now, we have the opportunity, with the American Rescue Plan funding and the preserving safe and stable families funding, to make a change in the Roanoke Childcare Network so it can support all families. Our goal today is to start a community action committee, to come up with a plan to change the way childcare works in Roanoke so that we can serve these families. So we just wanted to bring this issue to the attention of the council today, to ask for allies in serving these families. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. White. All right. Our next speaker will be Frieda Katka.
Thank you so much, City Council Mayor Lee, and all the rest of you all. Appreciate this opportunity. I'm here today representing the Grandin Court Neighborhood Association I'm the president of. We unanimously voted to oppose the project at Zero Brandon Avenue. The main concerns of our neighborhood is traffic. The development's not in our neighborhood, but a lot of us go by--travel that route. Another thing that was of major concern for our neighborhood has to do with protecting woodlands. We have a woodland that's in danger, the Shenandoah Woodlands, and our neighborhood really cares about protecting those. So I'm also here to hand out a letter on behalf of the Mothers Out Front Roanoke Team, signed by Anne Lesby Denham. She's a Mothers Out Front leader. And it says, Dear Planning Commission Members, Mothers Out Front is dedicated to protecting all children from the climate crisis that impacts their health today and a livable climate for them tomorrow. We are opposed to the proposed development at Zero Brandon Avenue as a climate justice issue and an environmental justice issue. Climate justice issue. Established woodlands on the Zero Brandon property are a carbon sink that helps to mitigate the carbon emissions in our city. These woodlands need to be protected as a climate solution to help prevent extreme weather events that disproportionately harm marginalized communities. The woodlands provide a natural remedy to absorb stormwater runoff and help to prevent flooding downstream. It would not be fair for the people living downstream to experience flooding due to the development of this property. And then as a climate justice issue, it says, the proposed development would adversely affect the habitat for the endangered Roanoke log perch. And I've got copies that can be handed out to you all. And then also, on behalf of the General Federation of Star Women's Club, that was sent in by Secretary Amazetta Anderson, it was--it says--it was sent to the Planning Commission, but now it's moved up to y'all. The GFWC Star Women's Club is a member of the General Federation of Women's Clubs GFWC. The GFWC Star Women's Club opposes the proposed development at Zero Brandon Avenue because it's the watershed of the endangered Roanoke log perch. The established woodlands are an important natural resource that mitigates urban pollution and is a carbon sink, and the woodlands help to keep our water clean. The following GFWC resolutions with bold type added to emphasize the clauses and the resolutions that apply to the Zero Brandon project. And it has the resolutions there. It's--on behalf of the International Organization has these resolutions. I'm just going to read the bold print. Whereas many more species have been so depleted in numbers or available habitat that they are now in danger of becoming extinct, and whereas these species are of aesthetic, ecological, educational, historic, recreational, scientific value. Particularly in the world's rainforests, which harbor the greatest diversity of natural life, and whereas the Congress of the United States has recognized the importance of conservation of such species by enacting the Endangered Species Act, and by encouraging each state to adopt parallel legislation to give protection to species within its own boundaries. Therefore, resolve that the General Federation of Women's Clubs urges without compromise the reauthorization implementation of the Endangered Species Act with the appropriation of sufficient funding and the flexibility to recognize personal property rights, and also urges its member clubs to advocate for the adoption of appropriate state legislation following the model of the Federal Endangered Species Act. The endangered Roanoke log perch is recognized by the state of Virginia, as well as federally, as being endangered species. The other resolutions has to do with forest resources. There's a resolution about global warming, and one about water quality and supply. And it talks about the importance of protecting our water security. I see I'm running out of time. Anyhow, I've got the hard copies. There's a copy for each one of you, and I appreciate this time to bring this important aspect of this issue before you. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Katka. Our next speaker will be Ms. Barbara Dirk.
Dear Mayor and members of city council, and Bill Best Pitch, you are on the podium today. So you are right here with me. I am delighted to be here. I have three things-- do I have five minutes? I have three things that I'd like to mention. One is gun violence. I was on the corner of Williamson Road and Elm Avenue, and the car next to me had a song blaring, talking about killing people and carrying guns in your back pocket and making it permanent. And I was so offended by this hate, hate that I called whoever's over the gun violence committee that you all just appointed, the staff person. And he said, oh, he says that that's what the kids listen to all the time. And I'm saying, well, that has got to stop. That I don't know how we can tell people that you do not kill, you do not steal, but we need to have a community norm that says there are other ways to handling conflict. The second thing I'd like to talk to you is about Zero Brandon. That I go by bicycling, boating, backpacking Barbara. I champion a healthy community appreciating alternative modes of transportation. I know about water. My property has been flooded due to an inappropriate school addition adjoining property, and so the water just came right on into my basement. So I know we need to look at how developments are put together. I believe in personal property rights. I believe that Robert Fraylon knows what city council's decision was in 2017, and that was before he purchased this property. So he understands about zoning. The staff report from stormwater did not mention how water flow would be mitigated from the removal of vegetation and the large footprint of 54 apartments and the 15 townhouses. So you all grew up with science projects and show and tell. Well, when I was growing up, there was a song that we sang, "When the rains came down, the floods came up. The rains came down and the floods came up." Well, let me show you what happens when the rain comes down on something that's porous, trees, soft grass. Let me show you what happens when rain-- Let me show you what happens when rain comes down on hard asphalt. Goes straight in. Can you all see that? See my rain? So, so these questions need to be asked before there's a rezoning approval of this property. Murray Run used to flood Wheeler's Dry Cleaning, and then the city put in a larger culvert under Brandon Avenue to allow more development and Eddie Wheeler's laundry not to be flooded anymore. Before you consider this rezoning application, ask for answers to the tree canopy requirements. Question the water runoff strategies that might add cost to the project. Questions how kids are going to walk or bicycle to school. Roanoke needs to be recognized as a healthy community. The population of Roanoke is increasing, is increasing because Roanoke champions clean air, clean water, and connectivity. Yes, we need places for people to live, work, play, but we also need to make sure that we have the clean air and clean water to support them. At least make these part of your priorities. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Barbara. All right, our next speaker is Mr. David Garland.
Welcome. And while not part of my prepared remarks, I do frankly echo the concern about, the need to be concerned about mitigating flood, which is a common nuisance, of course, can be even a common law nuisance when property use recreates flooding to others. Anyway, with my third visit in 90 days, it's tempting to simply glare in the words, "Be well understood and unspoken." I've been here before, but I won't, I won't be quite that lucky. I'm going to bring three requests on three related matters, starting with your response to the ongoing accumulation of matters surrounding Councilman Jeffrey's charges. Councilman Jeffrey was indicted in July for felony embezzlement from the Northwest Neighborhood Environmental Organization. The reaction of others on the council was essentially a shoulder shrug that it is a matter for the courts. And the councilman made no explanation, and council members requested none, to my knowledge. In August, he was implicated in destroying public records as well as evidence on a city-issued iPad computer after the computer was taken by police in connection with the investigation. He has not been publicly cleared, and no explanation has been forthcoming from the city or council. And, and the council members have requested none, to my knowledge. In August, it was, it came to light by the Roanoke Times, and it seemed, with respect to the data, that the city's attorney was essentially, that there was nothing to do, whatever it would be, would be in the Commonwealth Attorney's hands. It came to light by Roanoke Times coverage that Councilman Jeffrey's past is more checkered than voters knew, including a 2014 charge of credit card fraud that was resolved by restitution and community service, not acquittal. And this month, there was the indictment on new felony charges of obtaining Public Cares Act funding by false pretenses, not from a private organization, but from Roanoke's own Economic Development Authority. And once again, there's no explanation and no questions being asked. Then the silence from council members is really deafening. Not, no one on council has publicly invited Councilman Jeffrey to clear the air about computer files or provide some explanation for why police, two grand juries, and the Commonwealth Attorney's Office are all mistaken to think that he, that several serious financial crimes were committed, or that evidence was destroyed, or that public records were destroyed in the process inadvertently. Now, defendant has the right to stand mute before police in the court and to stand innocent until proven guilty beyond a reasonable doubt, beyond reasonable doubt in court, but he has no such right outside court as an elected official accountable to the public. And that's the difference, and surely you understand that difference. Nor can you avoid entanglement by doing this and saying nothing. This is a public corruption problem that requires a public response that includes all of you. Now, let's set aside for a moment calls for resignation or leaves of absence. How about assurances of concern and cooperation? These matters have been, have drawn widespread public attention in the press. Yet, to my knowledge, no council member, nor the city attorney or city manager has made a public statement that the council and the city will cooperate fully with the investigations and prosecutions in the public interest, nor have there been any voiced concerns about appearances of impropriety or even the well-being of, 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 of members' political party for those that are with the local Democrats. And it seems as if members of council have been recruited as silent cheerleaders, essentially, on, on his behalf rather than vocal advocates for the overall public interest. Now, I ask you to change course and give the public, the voters, a clear signal that council is not silently complicit and that council is committed to upholding council's reputation and the city's stewardship of public resources and public records. That brings me to my second concern, which is the city's response to the destruction of public records on Mr. Jeffrey's computer. It's a separate offense, reaching not only whatever evidence someone wanted to keep from police, but also other unrelated records destroyed in the process. And I asked the city attorney and director of technology by emails and letters more than a week ago whether the city has been, has made complaint to the police or the Commonwealth Attorney, what's been determined about the matter and whatnot, whether any lost records were identified or recovered. And I'm still waiting for a reply. It was in the news in August, and the public deserves some follow-up as to what's been resolved. And I asked the council to update the public, and I asked the council to request and support criminal investigation into the destruction of public records that occurred. Now, the third item is that, and on September 22nd, investigative article in the Roanoke Rambler, the city paid, according to that article, the city paid $850 to Colors Virginia Magazine for a large advertisement in June 2021 to congratulate the magazine on its sixth anniversary. Now, that's not even a common periodic anniversary, like the 10th, or 25th, or 100th. The ad had no material purpose, such as personnel recruitment or advertising city services. Colors Virginia Magazine is wholly owned by Jeffrey Media, which is, according to public records, a stock corporation owned by Councilman Jeffrey and his mother. At minimum, the transaction presents an appearance of conflict of interest. And Virginia's Local Government, oh, uh, Virginia's Local Government Conflicts of Interest Act does provide, or does seem to preclude that sort of transaction, just to sum that up. My remarks have the complete, a few further comments about that. But I think council should respond, should look into that and provide either whether it was, why they don't think it violated conflict of interest laws or submit the matter to the Commonwealth Attorney's Office for further investigation.
Thank you. All right, that concludes all of the...
Mayor Lee. I believe my wife signed me up to speak at 2:00. Do you mind if I go ahead and do that? She signed me up online.
Did she? Do we have any?
I think I saw them at 7:00, but I didn't see any more at 2:00.
Well, I'll leave it up to you. I was going to speak at 2:00 because I assumed y'all would prefer fewer speakers at night than the afternoon. I plan to come tonight, I can speak tonight, but there'd be one less speaker you'll have to listen to this evening.
And Mayor, council does have, you have the ability to allow Mr. Hopkins to speak.
All right, I'll do that. Come on up, Scott, me, so, Hopkins.
Thank you, Mayor Lee. As I said, I do plan to come to the meeting tonight, but obviously I won't speak. Thought it'd be a little easier on y'all to have fewer speakers at night.
Thank you.
My name is Bill Hopkins. I live at Lemo 2 Oakwood Drive. I'm here to speak in opposition to the rezoning of Zero Brandon Avenue. Either my parents or I have lived at Lemo 2 Oakwood Drive for almost 55 years, so very familiar with the area. The topic I want to talk about is village centers. According to the comprehensive plan, in order to justify moving a, rezoning a parcel of land from single residential to multifamily, it needs to be part of a village center or a potential village center. And the two candidates in this case that have been identified, one is Brandon in Bramleton, the other one is Brandon in Main Street. I would submit to you, of course, I've been watching these corners for 55 years, almost 55 years. Neither one meets the criteria of a village center, and neither one in our lifetimes will meet that criteria. There are really two things a village center needs. And we're all familiar with Grandin Village, which is probably the model for that sort of thing. One is walkability for the neighborhood, and the other is a place to gather, which typically would be restaurants or bars. Neither one of these locations have that, and neither one will. As to walkability, there are no sidewalks from my neighborhood, Oak Hill, down to Brandon and Bramleton. There are no sidewalks from Lakewood, which is across from Oak Hill, from Brandon to Bramleton. The folks on the other side of Brandon, the Wascena side, they're not going to want to cross that street on a regular basis. Even if Brandon Village is built, and a sidewalk is built from Brandon Village to the corner of Brandon and Bramleton, families and others are not going to want to walk that way because of the traffic. And then, of course, from Brandon and Main Street across, nobody's, nobody's going to make that walk. And for those reasons, I think you never will, you don't have a village center, you don't have a viable village center, and you, and you, and you never will. And that's what is required to justify rezoning from single family to multifamily. Now, one item came up in the Planning Commission, which I wanted to comment on briefly. And Mr. Fraylon has the right to build single-family homes on this parcel as a matter of right. And he's argued that the 12 driveways and the homes that he would build would be more of a traffic issue and more of a safety issue than what he proposes. Now, I would submit to you that the city and Mr. Fraylon are not going to build 12 homes with driveways like that. I trust them to build in a safe way for the citizens. But Mr. Fraylon has a strong financial interest not to do that, and that is, building homes in that manner are going to be difficult to sell. Folks aren't going to want to pull out of a driveway going either way on Brandon. And I would submit for that reason that whatever plan Mr. Fraylon ultimately builds as a matter of right is not going to have that component in it. I apologize for the confusion about speaking. I will be here tonight, but obviously I won't speak again. And thank you for your time.
Thank you.
All right, that does conclude the hearing of citizens upon public matters. We will now move down to item number four, which is our consent agenda. All matters listed under the consent agenda are considered to be routine by the members of City Council and will be discussed, will be enacted, excuse me, by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of the items. If discussion is desired, the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately. Now, there is a request for a closed meeting from the mayor to discuss the 2021 Citizen of the Year Award pursuant to Section 2.2-3711 Code of Virginia as amended. All right?
And Mayor, is there that other walk-on closed session also requested under the same section?
Yes, sir.
That would deal with possible discipline and other actions regarding a council member? Do you wish that to be added?
Yeah, there will be a closed meeting from the mayor to discuss a personnel matter pursuant to Section 2.2-3711 Code of Virginia as amended. I will need a motion to approve the consent agenda.
With these two matters added, correct?
With the two closed sessions that were added.
Thank you, Mayor.
Move the consent agenda with the closed added, closed meetings, with the two added closed meetings.
Second.
All right, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Jeffrey.
Aye.
Ms. Moon Reynolds.
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones.
Aye.
Vice Mayor White Boyd.
Aye.
Ms. Bespit.
Aye.
Mr. Cobb.
Aye.
And Mayor Lee.
Aye. And the consent agenda has been approved. All right, we now go to our regular agenda. There are no public hearings, there are no petitions and communications. And we now go to item seven, which is a report of city officers and comments of the city manager. The city manager, there are no briefings today. And there is an item that we need to address as acceptance of additional funding in connection with the shuttered venues operators grant from the Small Business Administration Office of Disaster Assistance to provide support to live, to live venue operators in response to the impacts of COVID-19. There's a resolution.
Move the resolution.
Second.
Madam Clerk, can you read the title paragraph?
A resolution authorizing the acceptance of additional shuttered venue operators grant from the United States Small Business Administration Office of Disaster Assistance and authorizing the execution and filing of appropriate documents to obtain such funds.
All right. Any discussion for members of council? Hang on, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Jeffrey.
Aye.
Ms. Moon Reynolds.
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones.
Aye.
Vice Mayor White Boyd.
Aye.
Ms. Bespit.
Aye.
Mr. Cobb.
Aye.
Mayor Lee.
Aye. And the resolution passes. There's a budget ordinance.
Also move the budget ordinance.
Second. All right. Madam Clerk, can you read the title paragraph?
An ordinance to appropriate funding from the Economic Aid to Hard-Hit Business, Nonprofits, and Venues Act amended by the American Rescue Plan Act, amending and reordaining certain sections of the 2021-2022 Grant Fund appropriations and dispensing with the second reading by title of this ordinance.
All right, is there any discussion by members of council? Any questions? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Jeffrey.
Aye.
Ms. Moon Reynolds.
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones.
Aye.
Vice Mayor White Boyd.
Aye.
Ms. Bespit.
Aye.
Mr. Cobb.
Aye.
And Mayor Lee.
Aye. And the budget ordinance passes, thank you. Item number two is amendment to the FY 2021 Asphalt Concrete Overlays and Pavement Profiling Contract with Boxley Materials Company for additional concrete overlays and pavement profiling. There is a resolution.
Move the resolution.
Second.
All right, Madam Clerk, please read the title paragraph.
A resolution authorizing the city manager's issuance and execution of a contract amendment to the city's contract with Boxley Materials Company for an additional asphalt concrete overlays and pavement profiling of various streets within city limits and authorizing the city manager to take such actions and execute such documents as may be necessary to provide for the implementation, administration, and enforcement of such contract as amended.
All right, is there any discussion by members of council or any questions? Hang on, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Jeffrey.
Aye.
Ms. Moon Reynolds.
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones.
Aye.
Vice Mayor White Boyd.
Aye.
Ms. Bespit.
Aye.
Mr. Cobb.
Aye.
And Mayor Lee.
Aye. And the resolution passes, thank you. Item three is the authorization of an encroachment permit for Virginia Western Community College. permit for Virginia Western Community College for installation of a sign within the roundabout located at Overland Road and Colonial Avenue Southwest. There is an ordinance.
Move the ordinance. Second.
Madam Clerk, please read the title paragraph.
An ordinance allowing an encroachment requested by Virginia Western Community College to place and display a sign approximately 32 feet by 3 feet in the city's public right-of-way located at the intersection of Overland Road Southwest and Colonial Avenue Southwest within the island located inside the roundabout upon certain terms and conditions and dispensing with the second reading of this ordinance by title.
All right. Any members of council have any questions or comments? All right, hearing none. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Jeffrey.
Aye.
Ms. Moon Reynolds.
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones.
Aye.
Vice Mayor White Boyd.
Aye.
Mr. Best Pitch.
Aye.
Mr. Cobb.
Aye.
And Mayor Lee.
Aye, and the ordinance passes. Thank you. At this time, I'm pleased to recognize our city manager for comments.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Just a couple of items. All of these, I believe, have appeared in your recent updates, but just wanted to highlight a couple of these. One of those is this Saturday will be the annual drug buyback, or take-back program at various locations. Certainly, there'll be additional information posted with that as well. Also wanted to draw your attention to, as I had in the update, to the events that are starting to occur at the Burgland Civic Center. These range from, obviously, the Broadway shows returning to, of course, the Rail Yard Dogs hockey team start at work as well. And there is a new item, which we've referred to as the ice bumper cars that you all saw, which are actually a part of the ability to rent kind of the space itself and a new activity. All of that information is available on the Civic Center's website as well. Also wanted to highlight a few changes that we have made in some of our services, in particular, expanded hours at the Melrose Library as well as at the Eureka Recreation Center. Both of these are in response to some of the ongoing efforts to ensure that there are safe extended activities for youth during these upcoming months. Those include the Eureka Fall Festival on October 29th. This coincides with an early release program with Roanoke City Public Schools. As I mentioned, extended hours at the Melrose Library on Tuesdays, Wednesdays, and Thursdays, when it will be open until 8:00 p.m., and there will be various programming activities that accompany that as well. There are also expanded hours on Friday evenings, Saturday evenings, and Sunday mornings at the Eureka Recreation Center and programming around those activities as well. There are other items also. All of those items can be found on our city website under the Star City Safe sub-page. So if you go there and look up Star City Safe, you'll find these items and more, and they'll continue to be kept up to date as we go through the next several months. Those are the items that I had. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Carr.
Thank you, Mayor. Bob, could you just talk briefly about masks and mask-wearing at Burgland events? I know I've had a couple of citizens reach out about that, and I know private venues have one protocol they can follow, and public venues may be different, if you could.
Sure, sure. So, for example, I will use not only Burgland, but I will use our libraries. I will use this chamber. I will use this building as an example. We, of course, currently have a mandate that all city employees actually are required to wear masks in any of our public facilities, as well as when they're on the job and not outside. So, for example, if they're riding together in a truck, they're required to wear those masks. That mandate does not, cannot extend out into the general public. So if someone chooses to come into the municipal building, we certainly will provide them the opportunity to wear a mask, but we will not require that opportunity. That is the same with the Burgland Civic Center, our libraries, and so on. Now, however, Burgland is a little bit different in that the entertainers or the events that are held there often establish as a part of the purchase of tickets to actually attend an event separate and additional rules. And certainly, they can, and in some cases they have, require additional items beyond those that we require as well. So, the real advice for those kinds of facilities would be, or those kinds of activities would be for someone who is attending to find out from the event itself, or the Burgland Center can help them as well, what rules may differ in response to what our rules are with those as well. So hopefully, that gives some insight. And that, of course, is subject to change, as everything has been with COVID as we've worked our way through. And, of course, this differs from what we had when we were operating under the emergency order, the emergency authorization, which gave us some extra authorities that we don't normally possess in those instances. And I should also say, this is different also than what you might find at Center in the Square or at the Jefferson Center, which are operated, obviously, by nonprofits, separate and independent from the city. And at least in both of those instances, masks are required to be worn, and in the case of the Jefferson Center, proof of vaccination is required to attend events there as well. So, again, also would ask folks to check with the venues as to what rules apply for those events that are being held there.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Mr. Jim, Councilman Jeffrey.
Bob, regarding the staffing at Burgland Center, most of them, some of them have been furloughed. Are they coming back because of these events?
Yeah, almost. I believe just about all of the employees have returned. The ones that were furloughed tended to be our part-time event managers, our event folks, the folks that actually helped during those events. A number of them, because the furlough went so long, of course, found employment elsewhere. But all of the ones that were available to be returned have been returned and will probably continue to increase as these events actually expand further.
Okay, thank you.
Sure. And actually, part of that act that you just took, the action that you all just took regarding the Shuttered Venues Act is in part helping us do that, because those were dollars that are made available to return folks back into employment.
Great, thank you. All right, thank you. We'll now move to item number eight on the agenda, which is reports of committees. A report of the Roanoke City School Board requesting appropriation of funds for various educational programs, and a report of the city manager recommending that council concur. In the request, Donna Caldwell is director of accounting, spokesperson. There's a budget ordinance.
Move the budget ordinance. Second.
Madam Clerk, please read the title paragraph.
An ordinance to appropriate funding from the Commonwealth, federal, and private grant for various educational programs, amending and reordaining certain sections of the 2021-2022 school grant fund appropriations, and dispensing with the second reading by title of this ordinance.
All right. Are there any questions or comments, council? Hearing none. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Jeffrey.
Aye.
Ms. Moon Reynolds.
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones.
Aye.
Vice Mayor White Boyd.
Aye.
Mr. Best Pitch.
Aye.
Mr. Cobb.
Aye.
And Mayor Lee.
Aye, and the budget ordinance passes. Thank you. Item B is a report of certain authorities, boards, committees, and commissions in which city councils serve as liaisons or appointees. Are there any comments by members of council as it relates to this item? Ms. Moon Reynolds.
Excuse me, I'm wearing that mask. I do have some Roanoke Redevelopment and Housing Authority news. Regarding the Rental Assistance Program for Public Housing Residents, Roanoke Redevelopment and Housing continues to provide assistance to its families in submitting rent relief applications to Virginia Housing. TAP is no longer accepting rent relief applications due to COVID, so Virginia Housing Department is now the housing's only resource. Good news, Roanoke Redevelopment and Housing will host a trunk-or-treat on next Saturday from 11:00 to 1:00 p.m., and this will be at the Jamestown Public Housing Facility. The event is joined with their second annual diaper bag event in honor of Amara Lane, who was a 22-month-old child from Lynchburg who died after being abused by her mother in 2018. Over the past two months, baby items such as bottles, pacifiers, diapers, wipes, et cetera, have been collected, and donations are still being accepted through this Thursday. The bags will be delivered during the trunk-or-treat event, and if anyone is interested in donating items, contact Sonia Woody, and the number is 540-613-3759 to have the items picked up or dropped off. Again, that number is 540-613-3759. Also during this event on next Saturday, Roanoke Redevelopment and Housing will begin pursuing their latest program geared towards pre-teensagers and teenagers called PEP, Personal Enrichment Program, aimed at mentoring groups twice a week to provide life skills, curriculum, games, sports, mental wellness, and so much more. The goal is that the program will help increase school participation, lessen truancy, and circle back, excuse me, and circle back to provide opportunities to the entire family. And last, in addition to the diaper bag distribution, there will be books from Star City Reads and Roanoke City Public Library, as well as treats and activities from Family Services of Roanoke Valley, the Roanoke Police Department, and Recess Team, and STEM from the Bill Smart Institute. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Let me ask you a question, Ron. Where's the mentoring group that's held twice a week? Where's that held over time?
That's going to be through the main office, up at Roanoke Redevelopment and Housing, at their main office.
Okay.
So all of us are interested in that, because it's really for the public housing tenants.
Okay.
It's who they're reaching out to.
All right, thank you. Anybody else have any comments? Thank you. Vice Mayor.
Thank you. I just wanted to congratulate St. Gerard's Catholic Church again publicly for celebrating their 75th church anniversary. Some of us may or may not know, but St. Gerard Catholic Church was the first African-American Catholic church in southwest Virginia, and they were able to celebrate 75 years this past Saturday.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Seems to be all on that. Thank you all for your work in the community, and I'm pleased to see a lot of positive things going, and I'm very impressed with what the Redevelopment and Housing Authority has done. And, Madam Clerk, at some point down the line, when you see there's room, there's time for it, I'd like to get together with the Housing Authority Board just to talk to them about several things. They've done a lot over there and some other issues, so I'd like to bring them in at one of our Monday morning first council meeting briefings.
Okay, okay.
Okay.
Thank you for saying that, Mayor, because I have spoken with the executive director as well as the chair of the Board of Commissioners, who do desire to meet with the council jointly to share some of the things that they are doing. So I appreciate you bringing that up. Thank you.
Good, good. Think we need to meet with them. Mr. Cobb.
I think I have short-term memory loss. There's one other thing I wanted to share. This morning, I had the opportunity to participate in a dialogue that was set up by the Friendship Cities Program through China and our sister city there, Li Zhang. And it was a dialogue between Chinese and American students, Gen Z students, and they had an opportunity to get acquainted with each other virtually, share a little bit about the different places that they come from, what their educational interests are, and it was really an extraordinary opportunity. So I brought greetings from Roanoke Valley Sister Cities and the city of Roanoke, and there were 10 students from William Byrd High School, where I believe your daughter teaches.
Yeah.
And then students from one of the schools in Mapilo County in the Yunnan Province. And our former goodwill ambassador, she'll always be our goodwill ambassador, Pearl Foo, grew up in the Yunnan Province, and her grandfather was a governor of that province. So it was great to celebrate that connection today with students from Roanoke Valley.
Right. That's great. Thank you, Councilman Carr.
Mr. Mayor, one more thing, unless you, I can either mention it now or wait until we get to number 11, since we have been just going on and mentioning things, comments from the council members that are not related to reports. So if this is opportune time, I'll go ahead and share my other announcement.
Go ahead and share that.
Okay. Well, a couple of them are just kudos to our council member Joe Cobb. I just want to recognize him and Loudoun Avenue Christian Church Disciple Men for their efforts in donating, giving a substantial donation to purchase shirts and ties for the Gator Gents of Garden City. Notably, their generous donations will help these young men perhaps gain confidence as they dress their best and dress for success. So I wanted to congratulate Councilmember Cobb on that. Thank you for that donation.
Okay. Was that a group or donation? You made a donation to a group?
There were groups and individuals.
Yeah, but they just recognized, well, it came from Loudoun Avenue primarily, and with Councilmember Cobb. And also, on this Wednesday, Councilmember Cobb will be doing a presentation on honoring their breaths in the nave. He will tell the history of City Farm, Old Lick, and Corner Springs cemeteries, and how during urban renewal, over 1,500 bodies were removed and reinterred at Corner Springs from City Farm and Old Lick. And also, the bodies that were located at City Farm were removed to make space for Virginia Western Community College. Bodies located at the city-owned section of Old Lick Cemetery were also moved to make space for the I-581 interchange. All of these bodies were reinterred at the remote cemetery in Bodatuck County, which is now Corner Springs. And Joe's presentation will also be streamed live via our YouTube channel, and this is through Christ Episcopal Roanoke. Joe, did I leave anything out or need to add?
Thanks for giving that shout-out.
Okay, I wanted to give that shout-out, because I think I'm planning to attend. And the other thing that I have, Mayor, I have a lot of things going on this weekend. Roanoke City and Allegheny Health Department will host a vaccine clinic at Hurt Park Elementary School this Saturday. It's going to be hosted with Jerusalem and Monistar Baptist Churches, which will be celebrating Hurt Park Community Day. Pfizer and J&amp;J vaccines will be available. And there will also be $250 gift cards raffled every 30 minutes for those persons receiving the vaccinations, along with some face painting characters and food and treats for all ages. And this event will take place from 10:00 a.m. until 1:00. And also, just love good news rather than gloom and doom. In collaboration of partnerships working together for the greater good in Northwest community, Melrose Branch Library held its eighth annual Fall Festival this past Saturday. The Kiwanis Club readers today and leaders tomorrow also participated, along with Goodwill Industries and other Star City readers partners. And secondly, working to be united and not discriminated because of the color of your skin, Dan Casey wrote an article a week or so ago, and it was in the Roanoke Times, about two black and white churches coming together to discuss racial healing. The two men instrumental in bringing these churches together was J.C. Taylor, a deacon at Shallow Baptist Church, who's black, and Ken Briggs, who is a member of Windsor United Methodist Church, who is white, and both of them are members of the Kiwanis Club of Roanoke. Both churches have participated in various gatherings through Sunday school classes. We also had a breakfast. We toured our historic Gainesboro. We also had lunch, and most recently, on this past Saturday, there was 45 of us, black and white Christians, that took a bus trip to Greensboro to visit the International Civil Rights Center and Museum. As most know, this is the former Woolsworth Store, which reflects the transformative actions of February 1st in 1960, when the four African-American students from North Carolina A&amp;T College sat down and asserted their 14th Amendment rights of full and equal protection at a five- and 10-cent store, whites-only lunch counter, and that united the National Cityan Movement. And Dan's article was also published in Greensboro and Winston-Salem newspapers. And needless to say, we enjoyed the fellowship and open conversations about the treatment of blacks during their segregation era. And these two churches plan to continue this open dialogue about racial inequities, as well as seeking other opportunities to fellowship together. And I am glad to say that I am And I am glad to say that I am pleased to be a part of this group. Thank you, Mayor.
All right, thank you, Ms. Moon. Thank you, Councilman Carr, for all the work that you all are doing. And I'm hoping that everybody will try to govern themselves and attend as many of these events as you can. All right, we're down to unfinished business. We have none. Introduction and consideration of ordinances and resolutions. We have none at this time. Item number one is motion and miscellaneous business. Any comments by mayors? I mean by the mayor, members of council. I don't have any comments. I got a question. Well, if I had a chance, sitting at home on Saturday night, I got my days mixed up. Friday, I remember, opened the hockey season, opened up. Looks like a good crowd was there, was that?
Yeah, it was the opening game on Friday evening. And the first time in 600-plus days, I think, that there had been hockey played. So it was a big day. They didn't win, but it was a big day.
Yeah, well, I'm glad to see people have a chance to get out and attend that. And also, the, Joe, I think you mentioned the Gold Fest this weekend. Was that well, pretty well attended?
It was. I don't know what the total numbers were, but the couple of times I was down, it was very, there were a lot of people out. Pete Eschelman, who's with Roanoke Regional Partnership, said that the response had been really good.
Good, good.
That downtown businesses were encouraged by the support. And I think people were, you know, glad to have fun downtown.
Downtown needed that. That was a good shot-in-the-air. And I wish I was the size where I could get in those kayaking boats. And the water looked good. I thought if I was getting there, I was going to try to get down there and do that. But it was a lot of fun, a lot of fun. I'm glad we had a chance to, citizens had a chance to.
Mayor, maybe you can do the BMX bike stuff next year. Yeah, where you do the loops on the bikes.
No, that's a little too much for me.
Okay.
It was very real life. It was amazing how they transformed the place.
Yeah, it was great. And I just enjoyed that traffic down there, people. That's good for the vibrancy in our cities. Anybody else have anything? All right, Councilwoman Vivian Sanchez.
Since the vice mayor is not in charge today, I could be able to share my.
Oh. I don't know, I don't know. I don't know what that is, but you're welcome to share it.
I'm at a loss, Mayor.
I would like to share that Local Colors organized a Hispanic Heritage Festival, and it was very well-attended. But Councilman Joe Cobb and I were able to read the proclamation making Hispanic Heritage Month, and we did it bilingually. So it was a really nice time. And we also had a Hispanic Health Fair, which was organized by the city, myself, and Bradley Free Clinic, and where a lot of agencies participated. That was also well-attended, as well as the Wildwood Civic League. Chris Kraft was very good working with him as well. So thank you, Mayor.
Well, thank you. I've heard some good things about that, and thank you for your work, your part on that. It was very, very good. All right, all right, everybody got some more good news?
I have to apologize, Mayor. I thought we were at the comment section. I guess I'm skipping over the agenda. When I started talking about everything else, I thought we were already there. So I think I moved us ahead on all of our comments by council. That's what happened.
Okay.
That was me.
Okay, all right. Well, we got it all out, that's good news. All right, no vacancies or anything. And so, right now, our council meeting will stand in recess for closed meetings, and thereafter, we'll reconvene at 7:00. Thank you all.